Uh, back into session. And we will begin with our new business at this time, since we have no old business. Consider approval minutes of October fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve it, Sheriff.
Sorry.
We have a motion in second to approve the minutes of October fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Any comments? I will call for the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Item number two, consider accounts payable and payroll totals for October two thousand fifteen. Ms. Sawell, do you have any comments?
No, except for the fact that I have those reversed as far as where some of the pages are on that. Those uh, numbers are actually on page two.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll totals.
Do I have a second? We have a second. Mr. Norley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we need uh, asked to consider the uh, probate judge's credit card users fees. I'm calling Ms. Sawell at this time to give us the background on that.
Uh, yes, this is the uh, user fees that are for the online credit cards used at the probate judge's office. We had talked earlier in the uh, year and had discussed that Judge Bowden would start paying those from his indexing fee account. Uh, just a little misunderstanding as far as getting it processed. And so I'm asking if y'all will to um, please forgive those amounts from them at this time. Those just have not been remitted over to the county in the, in the uh, remittances that they've sent over monthly. And I'm just asking that we start that with FY sixteen to start having those paid by the indexing fund from the probate judge's office.
Judge Bowden, do you have any questions or comments?
Other than I appreciate the uh, Karen's uh, approach to it and um, I don't know the exact amount of money that exists. Um, it's two or three thousand dollars I think.
Right, I believe I had two thousand fifty-three dollars forty ninety, so it's.
And uh, just to make sure, you know, be a dead horse. On- online, when you renew your tag online, you, you are not paying any kind of convenience fee on your credit card like you do at a um, office. And we want to keep that um, as convenient as we can with the users online, so we're trying to push as hard as we can. And so um, we agree, I pay that out of my indexing fund because it's so important to get online. An attractive choice for the customers. And so um, we didn't pick that up when we said we would. And I think Karen's just saying let's pick it up now at the beginning of January. And I think that's very gracious and we would appreciate you doing that.
Well, I did talk with Ms. Sawell about this and I felt like since we were already through the budget year fifteen that we do it just this way and less paying and then starting with October for the fiscal year sixteen that we start letting them uh, permitted to pay it out of indexing fees. I think that's the most workable solution, don't you, Ms. Sawell?
I believe so.
So uh, do we have a motion to have this an exception to the credit um, how we want, how we want to award this council? We have a policy in place. Do we exempt the policy for fiscal year fifteen?
I think that works.
Okay. Could I have a motion that we exempt the um, these fees for fiscal year fifteen from the present policy we have in place?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we need to consider an animal shelter contract. By law, we are to provide uh, animal shelter uh, services. And in the past, we have contracted with Animal U.S., we have a contract herein uh, to, before us today for consideration. And the counselor has one correction that she needs uh.
Yes, there's a typographical error on, in section three. It states that um, the contract's due through October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. And it's my understanding that should actually be October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Do I have a motion that we accept this contract with this modification to correct October thirty-one, two thousand fifteen to October thirty-one, two thousand sixteen and send it back to the city of Animal U.S. for first?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion we uh, change this document.
And as, just for the public's information, I believe that contract is going to be, what's the total contract for the year?
It'd be, it's increasing five thousand, so a total of fifteen thousand for the year.
We've been paying ten thousand. We own a month-to-month contract right now until we get this contract in, in place.
It is, could, our previous contract did expire October uh, uh, thirty-first, I believe, of fifteen. So yes, at this point we are.
Can we include in that motion to accept the contract with a modification of date?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I thought we all, we already have a motion. Okay, we have a motion in second to accept this contract with that one modification.
Go with it.
If it's concurrent, have it concurrent with the city of Animal U.S.
Go with it before the change on that.
Okay. All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously.
Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Does that contract include if we are called uh, in can for the figure uh, dog situation that they, and we have to uh, do something with that animal?
I, the contract is that people have to
Bring it.
Present the animal to the shelter.
So it's up to them to pay the animal?
Right, but if you have to pick it up, you can take it to the shelter and they will have to accept it because it will be charged to us, is the way I understand.
So they, so they will not come to where we would need them?
No, they will not. You have to physically transport to the shelter.
I'm not gonna put a dollar, a bank of dollars in my bank.
Well, I'm not gonna address that because I'm not a legal person.
So that, things like that should be in that contract. We're gonna have, it's kinda gonna have a contract with them, that they should be a full contract where they take care of all situations. And that is a situation that we, we're gonna need.
I, I think they might would on an individual basis, depending on circumstances, if we called them just in good faith. But I don't think it'd be part of the contract. You know, I think if we had a situation where we needed to transport them in the vehicle they had, I think they would probably work with us on that. But they do accept animals.
We can always call on you as a reserve to bring your trailer out there to pick him up.
Use it whatever.
I said, with that trailer we have now for our tracking dog, we could use that to transport him. With the sheriff's reserve.
We needed something else to do. We probably wouldn't do that.
Okay. Uh, consider board appointments to South Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. And at this time, we have no one who has expressed an interest in it. I failed it to get in contact with uh, Arlen Davis who is presently serving that capacity. This slot has to be filled by an elected official. I've been out of town, uh, we can take care of this at the next board. And see if we can have somebody that's willing to, to do. So I, I asked if we table this, do I have a motion we table it?
So move.
Do I have a second?
What?
We wanna, we're gonna.
He, he, he don't wanna.
I haven't talked to him. I'm sure he will serve.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's just a matter of getting the paperwork into care and, you know, the, the policy we have.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second to uh, table this matter at this time till next month's meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 All uh, opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item, consider two thousand sixteen severe weather preparing this tax holiday, Ms. Sawell.
Uh, this is something that was sent to us by the Department of Revenue. Um, they are needing to know before January twenty-sixth and sixteenth whether or not we wish to participate. And it basically just um, gives a tax-free holiday uh, for these weather items that are used for severe weather. And it's got a list of limitations on it and such. Uh, and that's to be held on February twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth of sixteen.
Well, we done this in the past.
Right, yeah, we done it in the past.
I make a motion we continue.
Second.
We have a motion in second that we uh, uh, adopt this, this a resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Sawell.
Uh, yes, sir.
That we adopt the resolution for severe weather preparing this tax holiday. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Next item, consider the cat supplemental agreement, Ms. Sawell.
Uh, yes, sir. Ms. Barnes had to be away at a training conference today and she asked me to address this for y'all, with y'all. Basically, it's an uh, uh, an extension of the agreement that's already in place for their federal uh, award of funding. And it's just gonna extend an additional two years, ending September the thirtieth of seventeen.
So by extending this by two, if we enter agree, disagreement, then we will be assured of funding for the next two years.
From what I understand from her, that is correct.
Do I have a motion that we approve this supplemental agreement?
I make a motion.
Mr. Terman motion, Mr. Barton second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. At this time, we need to consider relocation of Florilla Voting Precinct, oh nine zero, uh, Ms. Sawell. Would you wish to discuss that?
This has been in the works for quite a while that different citizens of Florilla area has um, requested a change from the old National Guard Army where they did uh, vote previously. There's been some situational changes, changes in ownership of the buildings. And I've been in contact with the city of Florilla, the uh, city clerk there. And they actually named that building uh, the Rodney J. Evans Civic Center at four thirty-nine Victoria Lane as the new building that the city is using for their elections. Uh, Judge Bowden has been part of the process and I'm sure he would like to address it a little bit more with y'all.
Karen's pretty much stated if what we wanna do is just move the voting precinct from the old National Guard Army to the, that new um, building that used to be part of the state park that's owned by the city now. And um, used to, you'd have to ask the Department of Justice for some type of approval to do that. But we don't have to do that anymore as long as you um, believe that it's, you know, a fair and accessible place to, to have the uh, election. And there're just not that many places down in Florilla that are, would be as good as this one, so.
It's my understanding that they're going to tear down the old National Guard Army. And so therefore, we wouldn't have a place.
Right.
So we.
They still, they tell aside on that, Sheriff, and what they wanna do with it, because it costs much to tear it down. It costs much to maintain it, but I think it's a great move for the city to have somewhere to go vote it. Rodney Evans building there.
We can't take the chance of that building being torn down on the day of the election.
No, but I say it's.
So therefore, we have to make plans, correct Judge?
Right, and it's.
That's just what I said. We've moved it to the old, new building.
Is that a motion?
It went, if Judge is through and.
Do I have a motion to relocate the Florilla Voting Precinct?
I'll make a motion, we relocate that place.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Can I just add to that, that I'd like to have uh, Karen and um, Stacy get us some little written agreement with the city so that our dates for elections will take priority over family reunions and things of that nature.
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
I, I do know they published their rates for use of that building in the paper. And I think a day's use is six hundred dollars, but we're trying to.
I've already spoken with.
That, that, they gonna drop that.
Ms. Kathy said they will accept our, our fee that we.
They gonna drop that. We can handle that. We can live with it.
That's great.
Some little written agreement might be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Administrator can handle that, can't you?
Yes, sir, I sure can.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is consider a labor contract.
Did we?
We didn't vote on it.
We need to vote.
We didn't vote. I thought Mr. Harold said we'd already done that.
We had a, we had a motion on that. Had a motion on the second.
All in favor of the motion to relocate the Florilla Voting Precinct?
Who made the motion and who seconded it, first of all?
Mr. Terman.
I made the motion.
Okay.
I second.
You, you have your notes available. They not speaking into the microphone, so Rachel's gonna have a problem. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, the next item is rescind the lodging and meal policy.
Skip.
Now, is consider labor contract.
Yes, sir.
At this time, Ms. Sawell.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm requesting assistance in helping to close out the end of year um, financials. And I was just asking if I can uh, have authority to employ someone at a limited number of hours to assist in that final closeout, since this will be my first one.
Are you uh, a maximum rate of forty dollars an hour, but, uh, piece of fish?
That should be, that should be sufficient, yes, sir.
How many hours are you anticipating?
Well, I hope not many, but.
Maybe four, maybe forty at the max?
That, that would be fine. We'll work within that.
Don't put too much pressure on the chairman.
Well, we just, just, I don't wanna be open-ended so that, that she goes out and bu, and hires one of her relatives at a million dollars.
That's why we put her in position where she can handle it, manage it.
So, do I have a motion that we give Ms. Sawell the authority to enter to a labor contract at the, to a maximum forty dollars an hour and with a maximum forty hours to close out the year end for two thousand fifteen?
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item ten, rescind lodging and meal policy. This is became, we have instituted, it came as, things had happened. Uh, meal uh, costs had gotten sorta exorbitant in some cases and that was because we did this. There seemed to be some uh, concerns about uh, uh, employees not having the money with them to pay for the meals and still wanting to do it with the credit card. And if you have a meal policy, you cannot put it on a credit card. So I'm going to ask Ms. Sawell to expand on that.
Yes, at a recent training, then I did learn that we cannot have our employees using the county credit card and paying for meals whenever they're away at trainings, if there is a lodging and meal, or a meal policy in place. And we had uh, previously adopted one in September, uh, I believe the twenty-third meeting. And so uh, for the benefit of our employees, I'm just asking that we rescind that agreement and uh, just ask that all the department heads work with us to try to conserve these funds and try to build a bit more stewards with the funding and try to keep the cost down. But still have uh, they'll use the credit card when they're away.
Ms. Terman.
I make a motion, I make the motion we rescind that lodging and meal allowance policy that was previously adopted and go back to credit card. Now, I would like for all the employees to understand, and this would have to come from department heads, that this credit card is a privilege. And uh, if you abuse that privilege, you may lose that credit card. Uh, I mean, we're gonna have to make some kind of ruling, uh, make some kind of uh, 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 rules that we can abide by, we can live by. Uh, if you, you know, like somebody take a credit card and uh, say, say I take for instance, a credit card and, and uh, I go tend, one of the swanky restaurants. And I'm on a trip and uh, I spend about sixty, seventy dollars on a meal. Well, that is just ridiculous and it's uh, it's out of context. And we, we should uh, ask our department heads to talk to their people and ask them to please uh, be careful with those credit cards.
Would you uh?
And, and I think we need to have some kind of system where we review that. Of course, I think Diane does this, doesn't she? And if she sees a red flag, then she needs to notify you and you need to notify us. And we need to notify the department head. It needs to be a stop foot to it.
Let me ask you a question. If we rescind this policy, would you be willing to make it part of your motion that the uh, the amounts we have in the current policy be used as a guideline and we expect them to abide within that?
Well, I, I don't know if we could do that or not. I, I really don't. And I don't know if we could do that or not and say, we're gonna use a credit card. Could we?
I think it'd just be a judgment, you know, just, you know, I've used this for an example as well. Whenever we go to the Renaissance. And uh, if you go downstairs and have a breakfast, even at the cheapest breakfast on the bar, you know, the breakfast bar, it's seventeen dollars.
So that's.
And uh, so you're at a place, it's according where, you know, you're gonna try to be conservative everywhere you're at. But if you're with a group of people and you have a time limit to where you've got to be somewhere and do something, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna be caught in so many situations where you'll have to pay a little more. But on the average, most of the time, everybody's gonna be very conservative. But you know, if we get into this pricing thing, it's gonna, I think, create an issue. So where we, you got caught in a position where you couldn't, you know.
Yeah, I, I wasn't here at, at the time when this was set. But I feel like that if you go down to Orange Beach in, in August and eat breakfast at the motel where you stand there, it gonna cost you twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars.
At least.
A meal, right there. That's buffet. And ten dollars, we're not gonna handle that buffet meal. Then you, you can order off the menu, get more, but that's the buffet, won't handle it, so. I just, I'd like to say what Mr. Terman said and then, and I talked to the administrator about it. Let her look at it and, and talk to the department heads and try to get department head to try to work within the budget. What with, what the commissioner has got set price and try to live within that domain, you know. That's what I'd like to say.
Oh, where's your saying use, what we got as a guideline?
Right. At, at.
What you gonna?
I just want us to recognize that once a meal is bought, we are obligated to pay for it regardless of what it costs.
That's right.
Right.
That's right. But, but here's the thing. A lot of times, you're not, you're not gonna be at them big motels where you have to pay that much.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. If you put a guideline in, you could, you'd be out of that line, so.
But when you are, when you are protecting. When you're at that big place, you're covered.
Yeah.
You got something to, you know, you don't, you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
That's the way.
We have a motion on the floor, but we do not have a second. I need.
I need, and I say so.
Now we'll.
Okay. Carl and I have been to several meetings, Ford Montgomery and, and different places. And the priesters place up there, you can stop eating if you're going up that way for eight or nine dollars. You know, if you go hunting cheap, but you're not very hungry. But that's, it's pretty reasonable.
Well, if you're very hungry, you can.
Still, it don't cost you.
You can squash that hunger.
Yeah, but anyway, let's vote on it, Sheriff.
Is there any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, next item is a consider approval for IT department, that's uh, out of state travel, Mr. John Donaldson.
Yes, sir. Uh, I've gotta go to Pensacola for some training. And uh, I was told I needed to get approval from you for out of state travel.
That is correct.
I make a motion with, with pay a travel. Second.
Got a motion in second that we uh, permit Mr. Donaldson travel out of state for this training. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider, consider purchase of sheriff's vehicles, uh, Ms. Sawell or uh, Sheriff, do you want to make your presentation? It'd be nice, cause.
Please, it'd be easier for the recording of this.
That's a policy, ain't it?
Good morning. Um, what I, I talked with uh, Karen the other day, uh, and what I wanna do, go ahead, uh, we budgeted, was it one?
One.
One uh, vehicle in, in the budget this year. Uh, I spoke with the uh, the uh, dealership that got the bid last year, which, you know, the general rule, they're probably gonna be the ones to get the bid this year. Uh, the state has not awarded the bids yet. We're just kinda, kinda going, going on a good guesstimation that, that they're the ones gonna get it. Uh, so what I wanna do is go ahead and get the approval to uh, purchase the vehicle uh, as soon as the state awards those bids. Because uh, there's, uh, I, I left them, you know, our, my number uh, for them to give me a call as soon as they were, uh, were awarded it, if they are the ones awarded it. Uh, so that we can go ahead and get it ordered, cause once we get it ordered, you know, you're looking three or four months anyway. We're fixing to be in December, so right now, at, at best, we're probably gonna be April. May even be May, uh, getting the vehicle in.
So there's a patrol vehicle that you're asking for, it's gonna be bought off a state bid from whoever gets it.
Right. And, well, actually, yeah. Uh, actually, I, I'm, I'm requesting uh, a purchase of two. The one's in the budget and in the sheriff's office will buy one.
In other words, you're asking permission to purchase one vehicle based on the budget and also to purchase one vehicle that be purchased with law enforcement funds?
Correct.
Make a motion we approve this purchase. I'll second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Uh, Mr. Capps, the Shiloh subdivision.
Hey, by the way, how's David?
Uh, David's doing good. Uh, I talked to, well, you know, he had to, he had to have surgery Saturday.
Had to have one.
Get back in, have surgery.
Yeah.
Uh, he got out yesterday, went home about three-thirty. He was sounding real good. Uh, he's gotta go back to his lung doctor in Pensacola tomorrow. But uh, they anticipate everything being good with that. So hopefully, of course, next week, you know, it's Thanksgiving week. But uh, uh, I, I kinda look forward to being uh, you know, some, first next week, Monday to maybe some half-days. You know, according on what he can stand, but he's doing a lot better.
Good, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, uh, the sh, uh, consideration of the Shiloh subdivision, Mr. Capps.
Yes, sir, I have a uh, plat for a subdivision. It's only a one-lot subdivision. This person bought a pretty large parcel of land. He sold one lot, which you can do without a subdivision, but when you sell two or more, it becomes a subdivision. So we had to do this little plat for this one lot. But it's right off Valley Shiloh. It's gonna be named Shiloh subdivision. And it's on existing dirt road, Indian Springs Loop, which he doesn't have to pay because it's existing road. It's just a simple, real simple subdivision.
I make a motion we approve this subdivision.
Second.
Have a motion in second to approve the Shiloh subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item, consider bids on local lime base and rock. Mr. Capps?
Yeah, if you look on page uh, eighteen, there's a tabulation in nineteen, that'll be it. But uh, this is a local lime base rock that we get. Comparing to last year, the only thing one of it was a rip rap. Went from, the small rip rap, rip rap, went from twelve dollars a ton to eighteen. And the large rip rap went from uh, fourteen to eighteen. But everything else, they same.
Ask you a question about the lime rock. Uh, how is the amount determined? Is it by truckload or by weight?
It's by weight.
By weight. What about moisture content?
Well, just raining a lot, it's gonna be a little heavier. That's just the way it is.
Bids don't specify it has to be a certain percentage?
No, it doesn't specify. Nor does our state bid. I mean, you know, if it's raining when you get it, it's, line a little work.
That's the hard thing that, that to manage right there, when you got, need it and it's raining. You just, you ain't got no other choice. I got a question, Mr. Capps, is uh, this big large rock uh, down at Farwell, they don't, they don't, they don't have this kind of.
They don't have big rip rap.
They don't have big rip rap. We still using some from them when we, that's down a close bay.
Right.
They still, they.
Same price is ten dollars a ton.
Ton.
Normal stuff that we can get, the crushed, uh, lime base.
That's all I have, Sheriff.
Do I have a motion to accept the bids?
I make a motion to accept these bids on lime rock.
You got a second? Mr. Terman, you second?
Yes, I do.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There being none, motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider stolen and damaged property po, policy. This came out from the last meeting. We instructed Ms. uh, Brooks to draft a proposed policy and I will let her uh, expand on that.
The policy just provides that um, in the event county property is stolen, destroyed, or damaged, the employee should notify their supervisor who will notify the appropriate law enforcement agency to do an investigation. Um, if law enforcement determines that, the person responsible should be prosecuted and it will go through the proper court. Um, any compromises, settlements regarding prosecution will be voted on by the commissioners. You have to have a majority of vote.
Any questions?
Yes, you have a question, say, you got a question on there?
I got a question.
Okay.
Uh, if it's damaged or whatever, does that need to be mentioned? I mean, I, you would, we know who it was, whether it is a missing man. Who, who it was gonna be, who we need to notify, to sign it or to point it?
The.
All, all one, if need.
I would notify Karen and because it's county property, I think the. I would notify Karen and because it's county property, I think the commissioner or the commissioners would have to sign the complaint.
I mean, we just trying to, I'm leaving that if we do.
What, what constant, to price ranges of Mr. Main if I want them to share? I'm in there amount to the. No, sir, I I don't know, I'm asking.
Oh.
Approximately.
Well, there's, may I answer?
Yes.
Yeah.
There, there's not necessarily a price, it ju- just depends on the crime, you get into price range when you're talking about theft, but it depends on what the person did and what they're charged with as far as if it's a misdemeanor or felony.
Well, someone stole some barricade signs or roll close signs or, then that would fall under a dollar value?
It's for theft, it's five hundred or less is a misdemeanor, five hundred and above moves up to felony.
Five hundred or less. Five hundred. Five hundred or less is misdemeanor, anything over that.
Okay. Thank you.
But this policy provides, we had discussed, you know, if it's something minor, it might not necessarily have to go through the court system. And this policy allows the commissioners, it has to be a majority vote of commissioners on how they want to proceed with it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just glad we're getting something put in place because we got a lot of issues on that and I make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
I have a motion in second that we adopt this policy on uh stolen and damaged property, all in favor say aye?
Aha.
All opposed say nay, there being none, motion. Uh Carrie, is it this time we will entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion we go into executive session.
Second.
With that, I will ask uh the counselor to uh state the reason and how we're justified under the uh open meetings law.
Um the open meetings law allows the commission to go into an executive session to discuss negotiations or to discuss the um consideration that the governmental body is willing to offer itself when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. And we need to discuss the terms of lease.
And we do not have to return, do we?
No, sir.
That's good.
Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. By law, I am required to poll each member on this uh uh motion, uh Mr. Northing.
Yes.
Mr. Barton.
Yes.
Mr. Elmore.
Yes.
Mr. Terman.
Yes.
Therefore, the motion is approved, that we go into an executive session, uh.
Well, can we adjourn afterwards, sir?
Uh.
Yeah.
We'll have to come back in, what Mr. Barton said. She says.
I'm on defer.
She said we do not have to come in.
If, if you're not going, you need to announce whether or not you're going to reconvene. If you're going to reconvene, we need to let everyone know, if we're not going to reconvene, we need to let everyone know.
We're not reconvening.
But I I think that we would not be in a position to take any, any action if we, if we didn't.
But.
Not today.
Not today, so with that, we, we will not reconvene into open session, we will adjourn from the executive session.
And you need to move, you know, adjourn?
No, we don't need no moving, we, we got a motion go into executive session and that's part of the motion. So therefore, we need to move in into the.
Karen?
Room.
Did you get the snacks?
We need to move into the adjacent room, is that right, Ms. Salwell?
I believe that would probably.
Cause Audrey's still in.
Well, he's just got some paperwork down there, but um if we can meet in this one.